Hello everyone, thanks for joining us at the Ambassador Program Town Hall Meeting, our weekly meeting. This is number 156 and your eyes are not deceiving you, I am not Peter. I'm Colleen Pragmorn, but thanks for joining us. So I think we've got the workgroup updates today. And Guillermo's gonna help share screen for us so we can see what's on the agenda.
Okay, okay. Um, bottom's here, almost there.
No problem. Okay. Let's see, and we've got here today Jeffrey and Alfred and Tevo and Guillermo and Vanny and myself. And let's see, open topics. Not familiar with the open topics. But um, do we normally start out that way? I didn't think so. But anyway, the Ambassador Program, what it's about, what we're all about is it's for anyone who wants to learn more about the Singularity Net ecosystem and to contribute to its growth. It's the Singularity Net community's opportunity to contribute to the growth of the Singularity Net ecosystem at large. So and how do we do it? We work together in self-organizing workgroups and they're formed to focus on specific projects and areas of activity within the program. So that's how we kind of work. And let's see, for the first, the monthly workgroup sync call, can we get Vanny to talk about the sentiment analysis a little bit? Vanny, you got a minute?
Yeah, can do. I'm just gonna post a link to it in the chat, just one second. But this is basically, we did a sentiment analysis last quarter, but well, sentiment survey. But only seven people answered it and we never had the intention of it being used to decide anything definite. It was just like a test run. So this one is kind of the real thing. And it's basically asking people for how they feel about the different 21 workgroups that we've got in the Ambassador Program. And you know, whether they think they're doing good work, whether they think they feel a bit underfunded or a bit overfunded or whatever. And we, we are gonna use the analysis to help us with the decision on budget caps. Because budget caps for quarter four do need a bit of adjustment because some workgroups have got nowhere near what they need and some may have a little bit more than they need. So we do need to work out where the changes are gonna come. So the survey doesn't actually, you know, ask you where do you think these changes should be made? Who should get more, who should get less? It just asks you what kind of, what your opinion is about the different workgroups and how well they're working and how significant they are to the program. And we'll analyze that and we'll use it to help us, like to inform the discussion on budget caps. So it closes on August the 7th, so a little bit over a week to go. And it's open to call contributors to answer. And there's a link at the very start of the survey where you can check whether you are a core contributor, but I think everybody here is. So yeah, please do give your opinions in there. And we'll be analyzing it and talking about it in the governance meetings on the 12th, 14th and 19th of August. So that gives a little bit of time for it to be analyzed. And then those meetings, obviously as governance meetings are, are open to everybody and we can flash it all out in the light of what people have said. So that's about it.
Great, great. Thanks Vanny for explaining all that. That survey is really important. And yeah, I'll be sharing it in various channels through Discord. But yeah, 7th is the final day, but please don't wait to the last, the last minute because it does take a little bit of your time to do the survey, but we really need your opinions. So we appreciate it very much. All right, what do we got next Guillermo?
And let's jump into the monthly updates.
Oh, are we not supposed to be working, if you just go back one, wasn't it that we were meant to be working out the date of the next workgroup sync call? Cause it's like, is it, is it this Monday? As in the, what will it be, the 4th? Is that what that means?
It must be, yeah, with the question mark there, it looks like it, doesn't it?
Yes, yes.
So is that the normal time? It is, it is the normal time?
It's a, it's a time that we have used. I don't think there is a normal time. But no, I was just checking if that means this Monday, that actually I could just check the calendar, couldn't I?
I'm checking right now and it means, and it means the first week, so we need to kind of schedule on that. So next Monday is the 4th of August, next the 11th, and it's not the 17th, it's the 18th, St. Martin's Day.
Oh yeah.
Vanny?
Sorry, what?
If you have to pick, if you have to pick the date, when it will be first?
No, don't, don't make me pick it, no. I'm just looking at when the last one was and I think it's been about a month. So I think the reason it's there as Monday is we, there isn't another Monday in July, but it should be about then. So I think it's like the 4th would be the right one, wouldn't it?
Yeah, in Google Calendar, it shows the first week of every month.
Okay, so that's right then. All right.
Oh no, my bad, this is AI ethics and nothing is on there.
I'm just looking to see when there was a sync call and.
There is none.
No, but I've got it in the governance facilitation rotor. Oh blimey, no I haven't. I'm sure it was about.
The last one was on 30th.
The 30th, yeah, so then we're about right then, aren't we? Yeah, so I'd say since we didn't do it yesterday, which we probably should have, let's go for the 4th. And if I remember rightly, I think 1700 was a little bit late for some people, but I don't know. Is there anybody in the meeting who has an opinion?
Uh, I attend every auditing call at that time. If it, if it starts one hour before, I'm okay.
Yeah, I think I'd rather 1600 as well. Does anybody, does anybody hate the idea of 1600? UTC, I mean. Okay, well, should we get it in the calendar then for then?
Okay, can you do that, Tivo?
Okay.
I can.
So for 1600?
Recurring one, or I just add it for one month, or I add it only for this quarter?
I think just for this one because it, we sort of go, oh no, that was a terrible time and then change it, don't we? So.
Yes, we did. Okay, okay, okay. That's set up already, Monday, 16 UTC. Tivo's putting that on the calendar? Okay, back to you, Colleen, let's go for it.
All right, I just saw Kevin has joined us. Hey Kevin, Mr. Frey, thank you so much for coming in. All right, we've got workgroup updates. Let's see, I really don't know if anyone is, I'm not familiar with some of the names. So Treasury, do we have anyone? Is that, no, that is Tevo. This is all Tevo. I'm sorry. Whenever you're ready, Tevo, go ahead and fire away.
I'll switch the calendar later. Okay, on this slide, looks like this is a bit like year old slide. Treasury policy has closed since last year. But Treasury Guild and Treasury Automation. Regarding Treasury Automation, we meet only two times per quarter. So we did have one session in the between and next month we, there'll be no meetings. But what we did, we were basically selecting a lead for onboarding documentation regarding the new Discord bot feature that we're preparing. And next month we will be implementing the bot itself. And on the third month, we will be having a video meeting where we kind of go over it. And then also the onboarding guide will join after that. And that's like our main goal of this quarter, one little feature to improve our participation recognition. And we are also now doing like workgroup operations, namely like drafting and finalizing reports in the call. Or yeah, most of it, but I think, yeah, these ones we are doing in the call, in the Treasury Automation Workgroup. So we were basically just planning already in the first meeting, what's up with this quarter's plan? And the document should be available in Discord chat. If we have already posted them, in the meeting summaries, at least they should be available. And another topic we are discussing is how to be like establish bonus rewards and what kind of games we could play around it and how much reserves is adequate amount for how to Treasury Automation Workgroup, if at all, for following quarters. Yeah, more of stuff is like moving to this like asynchronous activity. But the asynchronous stuff is probably only the Treasury Operations and that kind of goes under the Treasury Guild. And far more like detailed, like recognition of how much the stuff takes time is recognized now in GitHub. And reports will be on the like progress reports, which been basically come up in the last month of the quarter. Right now it's more of the collection stage. I also see that we also did some real applications this quarter. And also like added, updated the dashboard with the new quarterly budgets. And yeah, regarding that, I also was painting that probably for several workgroups regarding asking for clarifications between quarter two and quarter three budget. Yeah, allocations where I'm still kind of following last year's rule set of what, when we stop transactions and when we don't and where we need to ask clarifications, because now I'm doing it alone. I'm most often to kind of lean into not doing transactions and asking clarifications first. And yeah, everybody probably knows this quarter we are in bi-weekly progress. So that kind of also has caused pain and I see people asking me every now and then, when is the Treasury distributions happening? It's ideally, it's gonna be bi-weekly entire this quarter. And yeah, one shout out, or like a good shout out, but when, I'm gonna extend like the day of when I would hope that people don't mess with DWork or GitHub, especially when they're auditing task at the same time when I'm doing operations. Last week we had again a lot of trouble where this, and it kind of was also my fault. I started my Treasury Operations one hour before then the event that I had put up. And then just the time when, yeah, like 10 minutes before basically started importing tasks. But at the same time, people were already finishing up their auditing. Anyway, so that kind of caused issues and had to do some redoing and some of the tasks probably are not rewarded. That was not recognized and people noticed them, so they will come up in the two weeks. So that's kind of Treasury Guild and Treasury Automation. And yeah, it's the Treasury Operations is now kind of under the Treasury Guild because it's not as transparent. However, and in, is it next week? Let me check the calendar. Because this week there is no operations, yeah. Next week is gonna be big one. I'm inviting everybody in Singularity Net and a bit of outside the network for people who are interested in what we do, how do we recognize contributions? And this will be like a big recorded session and it won't be publicly like available session. Well, it will be public available if they go through documentations, but it's not published publicly. And that will show the new iteration, new versions of what's happening and what new feature have been implemented to Treasury Manager. Aside of that cool thing, I'm also now using GitHub Agent and all the magic there to refactor entire Treasury Manager, which is still kind of will take time and it's, it's not, will be visible in the next week. But by the end of the quarter, potentially we're moving into a new, new age of Treasury Management. At least from my perspective. Then on the top button there, there is this Process Guild, Knowledge Base and DWork. And the DWork is actually now GitHub People Workgroup and Knowledge Base also, they are yeah, active workgroups, but they are not on the, like they didn't request budget. So we are just going from our, the leftovers. And Knowledge Base has like every month session, next one is next week on 4th, 10 AM UTC, where we will be drafting a proposal or if we need that or, or make an alternative. We've actually already started like an overview page and moving more to like GitHub of what, what is this workgroup about? And not using a proposal as onboarding, but actually having an onboarding document separately. And then we are going to decide on which new, of the new assets that we have recognized over this month. Go to Kitbook and then we distribute them between members who will be organizing them using the AI, which is then will be uploading to the Knowledge Base. And last week we had Town Hall where I also demonstrated the Knowledge Base and asked a bunch of questions through Zoom polling and we had some discussions. So insights from that will be go to the retrospective, but yeah, just repeating here a bit like, looks like the Knowledge Base is now more being curated towards agent usage. So because it seems like a lot of people don't need to find assets and if they do, they usually already have in their like browser memory or they know exactly where in Discord to look. But having like a holistic view of all the things we have created and how all of them connected is highly like valuable asset for like system designers and also probably for onboarding managed, like combined with LLMs and agents. We're also running asynchronous bi-weekly activity where we are captioning what we learned over two weeks because it's heavily again like asynchronous with this monthly syncing. So that's another experiment we are running and seeing if that helps us to make stronger and more like collaborative retrospectives, well not retrospective, progress reports. And at the start of the month, we have basically distributed who will be doing progress reports, who will be drafting them, who will be, and also we tried to, but we're still kind of struggling to kind of set the stage for preparing meetings asynchronously. And for now, over the years, I have been like preparing the sessions, facilitating them. And then from like, yeah, basically from last year, there is more push to people now helping me to do summaries. And also the facilitation is more like co-creative in a sense that it's not like that there is no facilitator role. Like everybody who joins in the session are part of facilitation and the rewards are allocated based on contributions. And yeah, on that note, that moves to this Process Guild, which is from now, just recently, I posted a bigger text about inviting everybody to the, to these same experiments that I've been running now for a few quarters throughout different workgroups. Each workgroup, even if it has their own kind of styling and then patterns, even though the algorithms are very similar. So it's cool to see how it affects, like how many people are in workgroups, how many contributors are done. And to me, it seems it's working because I get punished for not making it like distributing tasks to many different audiences. But it's still kind of similar to facilitator. So basically almost no effect on the facilitator rewards. But at least those people who are contributing, they also now get recognized and rewarded for participation.
Great.
Yeah, and then yeah, GitHub People, I kind of mentioned like this overall experiments kind of happen across the workgroups. But that is focusing on the like, how to use GitHub and how to, yeah, make it more integratable with the Treasury Manager itself. So all the lessons are now ready that were set or prepared in quarter four, I think, when we started. And I think now it's basically, we're discussing if we should have one, at least one more like sync call because we planned no meetings, but we probably could have one to kind of go over what we have. Maybe to an even video walkthrough, all the content and like the learnings and the courses. And now next stage is basically to move to main chain, which is where the blockchain credentials come in. Yeah, so that's nicely moving to the finalization page and like the initial calls are being finally met, even though it took far more time than expected. Yeah, and I think I mentioned everything from the Process Guild side. Yeah, Process Guild also handling like the invoices for the, some subscriptions. That, and yeah, I now kind of created upfront subscription payment because they don't really change that much. So like a dark water. Yeah, I guess that's it for now.
You do so much, Tevo. Thank you so much for everything you do. And this transition to, you know, agentic technology is really getting interesting and you're pivotal for that. So just wanna thank you for everything you do, Tevo. All right, next one we got, I think we've got Guillermo coming up with a few updates from workgroups. Go ahead Guillermo, when you're ready.
Hey Colin, yeah, I agree. A lot of, and also just to complement what Tivo, or what Tivo just developed. He had been crucial also Process and also Treasury and all the system. Designed that Tivo add as value to the community. I'll start with that. Following on that with the R and D update. As we have moved forward after the community voting for new proposals, they already start developing their roadmap once, some of them as the SEO proposal is already under development. Others are gathering needs, team and going through the different difficulties of building. Also the Guild went through also an internal discussion on the, the critical commitment that a research and development team or task force needs to do with deliverables and to build with a result-based allocation system. So we did went through a retrospective where we analyzed where we invest the resources, human resources, time. And we are trying to have a critical analytic of our outcome. At that will, yeah, will give us the direction we should aim for or, or choose to. Because at the end, it will, it will end up in a decision-making that if we address concerns, address problems. And yeah, we need to be critical on that and also it's a challenge for community and to have that mature discussion. But we are going through it, we are punching through the wall. And also at the same time, we are doing that, growing and maturing as a team. We have also been working on gathering the first feedback. And let's say in phase two of the governance dashboard that we have been sharing with the community. And that have been a great experience also. And again, I have to also big shout out to Tivo and Vanny and other members of the community. We went through, Tivo, through an exercise, what is that a situation? What we want to aim for? What we want to invest our time? Because we have a lot of Treasury and process information, how we can integrate Google APIs. Because when we started with a project, it was a consent dashboard. Now we end up with a, let's say core contributor framework for collaboration. It's more like a social network now because we need a user-based architect to build on top of workgroups and guilds layer. And also have been listening to governance discussions and increasing the tool capabilities. Definitely KPIs, performance and statistics, sentiment analysis possibilities, templating, quarterly reports, how to integrate again Treasury and the budgets into the form. And yeah, something also that Tivo mentioned, knowledge base, how everything will be integrated with the ASI stack. And if we can agent, the other development that is on the roadmap, that is the AI core contributor agent that will, so that we will integrate with this framework, we are working on that in mind. So knowledge base, knowledge graph capabilities, an MCP protocol to integrate it with the agent verse and our ASI stack. That's pretty exciting. We are working towards a challenging timeline. We are aiming to have a talk with, we talked with Colin yesterday, she's gonna be helping with a feedback and debugging. We're planning to have a session starting the 21th of August, aiming to test drive this tool in the next quarter iteration. Let's see, let's break it, okay? That's, that will be the, the objective. If she survives, we will, yeah, taking care of her and adding features and capabilities. Let's see. And also Vanny have been very crucial on this, Vanny, the amount of detail on forms and all the templating have been amazing. Yeah, as this development, it is really from this community, it's pretty unique. It is collective knowledge definitely, because what we are trying to do from the, with the R and D is just to put in order all these ideas and assistance that is already working. So yeah, big challenge, but we are almost there. And we'll be sharing again as we are building some educational onboarding and it will integrate with all the stuff that Archive and Process are already doing. Yeah, yeah, and then tell the story. Also, we are focusing on that. Then we will work with, also with Vanny and creating content about a short documentary of how we're building the tool, why. How we, and it's already looking nice and cool. Then we can vote for the music. And later on, so Latam. Latam, winter here in the South American hemisphere, so it's cold and rainy and, but. Winter here in the South uh American hemisphere, so it's cold um and rainy and um, but did, this didn't stop us. We uh have some um uh, member collective initiative. We were invited to my ninth age year. We went to a big party in Buenos Aires. Uh, the same week, we participated in a big uh technical workshop with TX pipe uh friends of the house and the singularity net ecosystem. Uh, on the uh TX free tooling for bridging uh Cardano with BTC. And also thinking on modular uh blockchain integration with whatever we do as we operate on Cardano. Mainnet. Um, so it was a four-hour, five-hour coding um uh workshop with some use cases on this tooling from TX pipe. Uh, and great, great staff, great networking. Um, so looking forward how we can yeah, keep building bridges and collaboration through Latam. Um. And the other thing we did that was pretty cool this month, on, on top of onboarding, a new member from Venezuela, Leandro. Uh, we are narrowing the search for onboarding into developers. And, and if it's education, they need to be developers so they, they can train and educate. Uh, and it had worked because we have been following the, the global ASI, let's say communication strategy that is that is based on use cases. So we created uh the eh agent uh highlight, uh highlight high, or spotlight agent. Um, there's an initiative coming through uh ASI, Catch. Uh, our partner, um, is a, the, the agent of the day. We don't have enough resources to do that, but we are doing. We are picking up an agent that, that it has to do with development sometimes and others with some other, um, let's say type of agent, let's say, uh tourism. So we already have two cases, one if about uh an NCP uh agent. Uh, that integrates ASI and agent verse for Ethereum and we created two, two videos already, okay? And we are using the case to educate also. We, we show, we share screen on how you need to integrate the agent to the ASI one, how to type into it. Where to read the, the prompting, how to, yeah, how, how to use the, the whole tool. And I think it's about, uh it's pretty important. And the main objective or the whole campaign we are, we are doing is to have a global identity and effort. If, if global goes this way, it's not about translating for us only. It's about us creating con- educational content in our lan- language for our community with our own cultural ADM. But not using stereotypes, you know, because it's the worst, you know, to sell Mexican food, you don't need to u- use a Mexican hat. You can put a, a, you know, something else. Um, so avoiding stereotypes, uh, focusing on how to use the tool. Uh, we have improved from the first video to the second video. Uh, and yeah, you can, you can uh check them on the, on our X platforms and, and they have had a lot of engagement. And the whole objective is targeting regional adoption and usage of the tools and the ASI stack that is already there. Um. Yeah, and I think that, that would do it. Uh, Colin, thank you for that. Sorry to, to long.
No, oh, no, you're fine. I mean, you're doing so much and so many great things. I love, we love to hear about it. I, I definitely. And of course, especially about the ASI and, you know, a- agency within ASI is, it's all exciting. That stack is is just incredible. And um, to be educating people on it is super, super important. So, thank you Guillermo, thank you. Um, do we have anyone here? Let me see who's here. Ah, la, 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 la. Let's see. Oh, Rams, I see you're here. Thank you. I didn't see you earlier. Um, yeah, I don't, we don't have anybody from AI Sandbox, but um, I know I can give a little inside um tip on that. Uh, I saw a presentation that Gorga did actually on uh a uh technology called Sandbox for um the uh Metaverse uh to put um, the actual, it's from the gaming Gamer's Guild uh to uh put um the ambassador um program into that environment. And so um, that's going to, that's research being done. So it looks like it could be some kind of possibility. So I'm excited about that whole um Roblox environment being put into a uh, like a Metaverse situation would be amazing. So um, look for that on the horizon or get involved, you know, with Gamers Guild or come to AI Sandbox and uh, talk to us. We've had uh discussions recently in AI Sandbox about AI and education and the future of education with AI. Um, that was a, a pretty interesting one. Unfortunately, I don't know what's coming up. I think um this Thursday though is a, a presentation week. It's not the think tank, I believe, if I'm right. So um, you know, join us there too. There's so much going on still. We still you know, would love to have participation. And like Guillermo said, we are gonna be looking for developers very soon. So um, you know, if you are a developer, get with us, get with us. So what do we have coming next? What's the next one Guillermo?
Let me go back to it.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay, we pretty much covered the global ethics initiative. Vanny, do you have anything from them?
Oh, no, but I can take the other ones. I don't know, have we got anybody? We haven't got anyone from Strategy here, have we?
I don't think so. Nobody from Strategy, right?
So I can quickly take governance. I mean, we have shared a little bit about the um sentiment survey, which I'll just post again in chat, just in case. And remind people that it closes on August the seventh, and then the results will be discussed in meetings on the twelfth, fourteenth and nineteenth. The other thing that has already come up in relation to governance is the workgroup sync call, which we set for this coming Monday. And if anybody's got stuff they wanna discuss, there's the rolling agenda. So please stick it on. And we can talk about whatever it might be. But the other main thing about governance, we've been having some really good discussions lately. I've noticed that we're starting to hear a bit of input from some of the newer people, which is really good. You know, sometimes we struggle with I don't know if it's like the time of day or what it is, but like people not being able to come off mute or, you know, being in transit or whatever. But it just seems like we're getting a bit more input now, which is cracking. And um, one thing I wanna note for people is that in the meeting on August the seventh, the discussion will be about Zeely. Because we had some kind of discussion about how we surface the issues that keep coming up in the consent process. And we agreed that what we'll do is we'll take some of them and put them on the agenda for governance workgroups discussions. And Zeely is something that's come up quite often and quite a lot of times people have been like, oh, I'm not really sure what it's about or blah, blah, blah. Um, I'm gonna post the governance workgroup rolling agenda as well. Um, so you can see that it's there. But I'll also be posting in the Discord channels of the people that actually, you know, the workgroups that use Zeely. And it'd be ace if we can get a few people along. I saw Mikasa that you were here earlier. I don't know if you've gone, just looking. Yeah, I think she's gone. But yeah, we will kind of post in those channels and, you know, just so that it's an open discussion. And, you know, we can just think about some of the issues that have come up and flash it out a little bit. Um, so that covers governance and open governance. There's kind of like very little difference at the moment. Um, onboarding, I could just say briefly that one of the interesting things that happened this month is we've been chatting with Sandbox Straight Think Tank about the idea of an onboarding AI agent. Um, we've kind of wondered a bit if the plan would be to constrain the agent in a similar way to how you might do with a rag. Um, it's sometimes called agentic rag. And if yes, what the content would be that we would constrain such an onboarding agent to. Um, I think maybe the ambassador Gitbook, meeting summaries and the onboarding material in Discord, but you know, it depends if we decide to go that way or not, but it's certainly an interesting idea. Um, yeah, so we'll be picking that up in the onboarding workgroup meeting and having a chat about it. Which is the first Thursday of August, which will be the seventh. Um, what else have we got? Archives. Yeah, yeah. This has been quite good fun. Um. As people might or might not know, our main focus this quarter is, well, first of all, this whole rule-based auditing process for assessing and auditing what a graph produces. Um, you know, like, is it accurate? Is it meaningful? Does it make sense? Has it surfaced anything you didn't see before? Blah, blah, blah. And then also in parallel with that, the sort of didactic work that we wanna do about how we can invite the community to be able to work with the data and work with a graph and audit its insights into their own archival material. So we're kind of hoping that what happens there is it increases the community's sense of ownership of the archives corpus. Because when we use a graph process to analyze it, the community can go, oh yeah, that makes sense. And oh no, that doesn't. And audit what we're getting. So this process has meant me learning a bit about Neo four J with Stephen. And we're recording some videos that we can use to show people how we did it. So they can kind of follow the process and learn what I'm learning. And we're also thinking about what our auditing rules will be. What will we look at to assess the graph process? We think we might work um specifically with governance workgroup summaries from quarter one and quarter two. As that is actually a complete set of materi- pretty complete set of material. And actually quite interesting. And I think because of the nature of governance workgroup, it is quite subtle and quite complex. And I guess vulnerable to misinterpretation. So it gives us, it gives us some meat to work with, I guess. So yeah, that's been the focus with archives. And then AI ethics. Um, people are working really hard on transcription and interviewing. Most of our transcription tasks for this quarter are finished and are being checked. And the end of this month is the deadline for those. And then people are also working on new interviewing. So that's all quite positive. You know, the more data we get in for the research project of um BGI Nexus into what the general public thinks about how, how AI should be governed. The more information we get, the better. We also had a bit of a failed attempt to do a MOOC, um, a massive online open learning um, course. We did have a meeting about the one we decided to do, but nobody had done the actual module, so there was nothing to discuss. Um, and then we kind of said, all right, we'll reschedule and we'll do a different one because access to that one would expire too soon for us to be able to pack it all in. Unfortunately, I forgot to take it off the uh calendar. So I do apologize for anybody who was trying to get into the meeting on Monday. What we are gonna do is start a new MOOC. Um, and in our Discord channel, the poll we had suggests that by a slimish margin, the favorite is the Coursera one that we found. So we'll be picking it up in August. And here is the link to the course that we are gonna do. If anyone's interested, they can kind of get ahead and get in there and do the first module. Um, so just register and it, you know, there is a free track for it. Um, you can do a paid one that gives you a certificate, but you know, that's up to you as an individual. And um, just about, just to remind people that it is a study group. So you're expected to have done the module first. We're not teaching you in the sessions. It's just to get together for those who have actually done the course. So, yeah, that's about it from all those.
Great. All right, I appreciate all those updates. Such exciting stuff going on and in all the workgroups. It's just an amazing time right now. In the era of AI. Uh, let's see, what workgroups or guilds are we missing? Strategy, Ayo is here. Right, right. Ayo, can you talk? Can you come up and say a little bit about the workgroup? Or strategy?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Good, uh, good day, everybody. Uh, feel, feels
Hello.
Feels good to be in the towel. Yeah, good, good to see you. Good to see you. Guillermo, thank you. Good to, Tevo, how do you do, Colin? Thank you so much. And uh, Vanny, I think I, I hear Vanny's voice every once, at least twice a month, so. So, I'm good or dying. Kelvin, Alfred, Jeffrey, thank you. Yeah, for um Strategy Guild, um, it's uh, we thought FM or um um, Katari would be present. Um, luckily, I, I came, so that this is, this is quite good. So we had um a research in um Q one where we um, we checked for um, the ambassadors awareness of the solutions in the singularity AI marketplace. And uh, yeah, and it was, it was, it was quite good. And then, you know, one of the suggestions that we got uh when we shared in the general um channel was that um, uh, it, it could, it would be nice to also see what the larger community um, I mean, extend the research to the larger community. So it's, so it's not just uh the ambassadors. Um, so, so now we are collaborating with um five um circles um, within the uh deep funding community. Uh, the Dev Outreach, the Operations, the Data Analytics, the IT and the um, there's one other one, um, forgotten one, uh, there's one, the five anyways. So um, uh, in collaboration with them to see what the awarded, how much um, the awarded teams know about um, about their counterpart solutions on the AI marketplace. Uh, so yeah, so we started work um on that already. Uh, we have um Clement and um Katari and um one hundred percent uh Unlin, Unlin that. So, oh, we are, we are in a good place. We hope to conclude that uh, before our next uh meeting. Uh, interestingly, our meeting is last Monday of the month. So uh, uh, please help us update that so that it reflects exactly last Monday. So luckily for us, it means that every Monday, the next day, there's a town hall. And all things been equal. If, if, uh, while if the last one is not thirty-eight or thirty-one, it means that we still get a town hall the next day and then we can come and share. So it's a good time uh next month. We, we hope to come here to share uh specifically on that. Let me present and see, share our results, the report and things like that. And secondly, uh, we are still, um, we had a, a bit of adjustment to make concerning our workshops because of how the um, the committee has been in terms of adapting to uh low token price uh meetings that are no longer weekly and things like that. So yeah, we were caught up with that in, in that. And then finally, uh, we are above water now. And so uh, we will be able to have our, our workshop this, uh, this quarter. It's when, it looks, uh, I'm very excited for it. So we've had outbound workshop, workshop for outbound uh workgroups, that's marketing video and, and, and writers. We've had for mid-bound, that's um, workgroups that has to do with both um internal stuff and external stuff like education. Um, R and D and AI Sandbox. And then now we're having workshop for support. Support workgroups. Support workgroups include uh workgroups like onboarding, translation and um treasury. And then there's one other one, gamers. Yes, Gamer's Guild. So uh, so you, you uh, you'll be hearing from Katari if you belong to any of these workgroups. She's going to wear a busy food dress and be sure to, to get insight uh that we all can apply in our various workgroups. Yeah, that will be it. I hope I did not extend beyond the time allotted to me. All right. Well, thank you for listening.
Oh, sure. Thank you so much for the update, Ayo. Um, I just wanna reiterate that the graphic is incorrect. The, the meeting, I believe he said, is the last Monday of the month. Uh, but is the time correct? Sixteen under UTC, Ayo, is that correct?
Yes, no, the time is correct. It's, it's also monthly. I, I just have had more detail to it. It's monthly, it's on Monday. It's monthly, it's a Monday, it's, it's 16, but it's just that it's the last Monday.
Yeah, the last Monday, okay, we'll correct that. Thank you so much for the update, really appreciate all that you do. All right, I'm moving right along, we're a little bit over time here. So, um, to the sentiment analysis, you want to give one last plug about that, Danny? Or any questions, you know, newcomers, if you have questions too, now's the time. Um, don't be afraid to speak up, really. I mean, say, you know, anything that, that you'd like at this point. Kevin, Alfred, Rams, Jeffrey, anybody? Crickets. All right.
I think you all did a wonderful job keeping us updated on the ambassador program, the future initiatives. Um, love the, the Coursera name drop and getting the AI ethics information out there. You're all doing a great job. Those are my sentiments.
Thank you, Kevin, and thank you for all that you do. You're out there in the world promoting, uh, everything, but mainly the ambassador program and, and it's amazing. And, um, your initiative, uh, for the athletes that you're working with, more power to you, bud, go for it. All right, so what else do we have? Um, we don't have any newcomers, I don't think. Um. And let's see, uh, the next one though is going to be Tuesday, August 5th. So you can join us then at 1800 UTC. But, um, I appreciate everybody coming today. You know, we've got Alfred, Kevin, Rams, Jeffrey, Tevo, Vani, Guillermo and myself. So until next time, have a great week and, you know, have fun in the era of AI. Thanks for joining us. Bye.
Peace for facilitation.
Thank you so much. Bye.
Bye bye, thank you Colin, bye everyone.